Freeman.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Radcliffe. Sanderson.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance, main standing. For the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, with heavy heart, we convene this evening. Please know that our thoughts and prayers are with the people of New Zealand in horrific slaughter that occurred in a peaceful country who welcomes everyone. Also, we received word over the weekend that Terry Wickler, forty-year veteran of employee with the city of Belvidere, as he ran the wastewater treatment plant, has passed away, and his services are Thursday. I believe the visitation is at ten, the funeral's at eleven. So please join me in a silent prayer for these folks. Is anyone here registered for public comment this evening? Okay, thank you. So that brings us to number four, approval of minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvedere City Council of March fourth, twenty nineteen, is presented. May I have a motion to approve? I have a motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderman Crawford. Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes as presented? Hearing none. All those in favor, approval. Will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Minutes are passed. Thank you. Under public hearing, we have done this evening, under special messages and proclamations. Growth Dimensions Annual Dinner is April fourth. This is the fortieth anniversary of Growth Dimensions. We have a table with ten seats, so if you are interested in attending, please let Shauna know. They have a wide choice on the menu. I think there's three different choices this year, and it should be a very special moment in the history of Growth Dimensions and their relationship with the city. Also, branch pickup starts next week, Brent?
April first.
April first, okay. So let your constituents know. It'll be on the city website and so forth. Next up, we have approval of expenditures. First up, general and special funds in the amount of one million, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars, ninety-four cents. May I have a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Crawford. Questions or comments? Alderman Snow.
I had a couple of questions, which I clarified with the police chief, but I did have one to note on that we do have a ninety-nine thousand coming out of the deal. I guess actually it's under considered as general, but the, for the roof repair for the city hall, so that's a significant dollar amount.
Brent, you want to address how we paid for that?
Yeah, the total cost was around the seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the roof replacement, and that was split between water, sewer, and general funds.
And we paid it in installments as went along, right?
Yeah, the ninety-nine thousand that's referenced, it's in this year, or this month's payables is the, in installment.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments?
Your honor.
Alderman Sanderson.
Yeah, just, what's the warranty on that, Brent? How long is that good for?
I'll have to look. I think it's like ten years or twenty years. It's a long, it's a long warranty.
Thank you. Anything else? Hearing nothing. All those in favor, approval. Will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
General and special funds expenditures are approved unanimously, which brings us to water and sewer funds. Expenditures of five hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and nineteen cents. Motion to approve?
A move.
Motion by Alderman Sanderson, second.
Oh, second, that's.
Second by Alderman Crawford. Questions, comments concerning any of these expenditures? Hearing none. All those in favor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Water and sewer funds expenditures are approved unanimously. Brings us to number eight, committee reports and minutes of city officers. Please note that items A through I have been received and placed on file. Brings us to item J, minutes of the committee of the whole building, planning, and zoning and public works of March eleventh, twenty nineteen. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman Frank. Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes as presented? Hearing none. All those in favor, approval. Will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Minutes are approved unanimously. Brings us to item nine, unfinished business, which would be ordinance four forty-three H, a second reading. An ordinance amending section one fourteen dash four oh four B of the Belvidere Municipal Code, which is to modify sewer rates. It's been, it was tabled February fourth. Remain on the table, Brent? Okay. Remains tabled. Brings us to ten, new business. We have ordinance four forty-six H, your first reading. These are silent readings typically, but I read them into the record for those folks that are listening or observing at home. An ordinance budgeting for all corporate purposes for the city of Belvidere, Boone County, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning May one, twenty nineteen, and ending April thirty, twenty twenty. Ordinance four forty-seven H, your first reading, an ordinance granting a special use to allow indoor commercial entertainment, a bar with video gaming, within the planned business district at nine eighty-two Belvidere Road. Ordinance four forty-h, four forty-eight H, first reading, an ordinance granting a special use to allow indoor commercial entertainment and event center within the neighborhood office district at fifteen fifty Pearl Street. Ordinance four forty-nine H, your first reading, an ordinance granting a special use to allow outdoor commercial entertainment, a beer garden, within the central business district at six twenty-two South State Street. And then, four fifty-h, your first reading, an ordinance approving a replat titled Plat Three of Town Hall Industrial Park. These will come back for a second reading and final disposition. Under F, we have resolution twenty ninety, twenty nineteen, a resolution directing the planning department to publish the zoning map of the city of Belvidere. May I have a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Porter. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the resolution now on the floor. Hearing none. All those in favor, will when, yes, Marsha.
So.
Alderman Freeman, excuse me.
So if someone doesn't agree with the way the city is zoned, how do they, who do they contact about that?
They would contact me. If someone wants to look at rezoning their property, they would have to file a rezoning application. It has a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then comes a city council for vote. Before someone spends the time and money, though, I would sit down with them and let them know what their likelihood of it being rezoned is, ask why they want to rezone it. A lot of times, people will come in wanting to rezone it, and then when you ask them, well, what's your end game? It's not a matter of rezoning, it's a special use, or even if they rezone it, it won't help them. So instead of just taking cold applications, I prefer if they contact me so we can discuss it to get the, you know, the best route to whatever outcome they're looking for.
So if someone were to think that all that industrial out there across from twenty, across from the high school there, should be commercial and retail, who would they, I mean, you would have to actually want to build something there, ask for it to be rezoned?
Well, so retail is a special use out there because it's planned industrial. So you can do commercial and retail by special use. That's what Speedway went through, that's what Mr. Caldwell went through with his car wash. Commercial and retail is permitted by special use. If you don't own the property, you, a resident can't go and change someone else's zoning. So if the property owner wants it changed, I should have prefaced that earlier, the property owner wants it changed, but a resident just can't come in and ask to do something to someone else's property. That property out there, the Sacred Corporate Park, that was rezoned back in the nineties, maybe even the eighties. So it has been industrial for quite some time. There just hasn't been much activity out there.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, approval. Will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Porter.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Resolution twenty ninety, twenty nineteen is approved unanimously. Brings us to item G, resolution twenty ninety-one, twenty nineteen. A resolution authorizing the execution of a real estate purchase between the city of Belvidere and Belvidere Bank and Trust as trustee of trust number one, two, three, six, and Gerald Rowe. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Crawford, may I have a second, second by Alderman Brooks. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the resolution now on the floor. Hearing none. All those in favor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
No.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
No.
Six in favor.
Thank you. Next, we have item H, resolution twenty ninety-two, twenty nineteen, a resolution reauthorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement for the creation of the Northern Illinois Land Bank Authority, which was previously approved by resolution twenty eighty-five dash twenty eighteen. May I have a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Snow, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Crawford. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Alderman Frank?
Yeah, I'd like to know if there's any changes from the first one to the second one, or the one that we got a couple of weeks ago, is there just, there's nothing changed?
From the one we gave you a couple of weeks ago, no.
Well, I thought there was something about the dissolution. It had to be done anytime sixty days, and then now it's saying it has to be done sixty days upon termination?
No. All right, you confused me, but I apologize. The council last December had adopted a resolution approving the land bank. Rockford made some ministerial changes to it, so we're simply adopting those ministerial changes. One is that where they'd refer to member as to members of the board of trustees, they're asking that to refer to trustee instead. This is a change in the word, and the reason they wanted to do that is because all the villages and municipalities that belong to it are the members. The people we point to, for example, Mr. Wolf, are the trustees. That's the only change there. And then the second part was that the original agreement that you approved allowed the members, being the municipalities, to give the land bank presiding officer the power to admit new members. Rockford didn't want to do that, they want to save that power for everybody else. So we're simply making it so that the person, the executive director, so to speak, for land bank, can't you na, you unilaterally add new people to it, or new municipalities. Those are the only changes from the one that you approved back in December. There's no changes from the one that was introduced to you a couple of weeks ago.
Alderman Sanderson, did you have a comment?
Well, I was just, I just want, you know, I was just looking over it. I wasn't still not sure about like, you know, if we wanted to pull out of this for some reason. It says Article eight, section thirteen oh two, persistent dissolve. So I guess you have to have two-thirds of the voting members of the board of trustees, but what if the city wants to pull out of this?
Each municipality.
What's covered under that?
Each municipality under the agreement has the unilateral right to withdraw from the commission, from the land bank. You simply have to give, I think it was sixty days notice to do so.
Is that sixty days from the time that we give them notice?
Yeah.
Or sixty days after a certain day of the year, or just?
No, from when we give them notice.
The first of the year, when everything's, it says it automatically renews, so I just wanted clarification.
The agreement renews. If all the members want to dissolve it, they have to file the procedures in Article eight. If any municipality wishes to withdraw, they simply withdraw and give sixty days notice.
I just want to be clear so that we don't get stuck in, we can't get out of if we, if it doesn't work, but we got it just for a reason, so we could try to help with the blight, so.
The section you're looking for is on page twelve, section eleven point zero three, withdrawal as a party.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify. Will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Resolution twenty ninety-two, twenty nineteen is authorized unanimously. Which brings us to resolution twenty ninety-three, twenty nineteen. Resolution appointing John Wolfe as the trustee to the Northern Illinois Land Bank Authority. Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman Sanderson. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the resolution now on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Resolution twenty ninety-three dash twenty nineteen is approved unanimously. Next, we have motions forward in City-County Coordinating Committee as of February thirteenth, twenty nineteen. The motions will be presented by co-chairman Snow. Co-chairman Snow, you have the floor.
Thank you, your honor. A, motion to approve PDC laboratory invoice number one nine three four nine one 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 in the amount of eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents with a fifty-fifty split between the city and the county. The way it's typed out, it says a split with the city of Belvidere. I'm assuming it should say split of.
That's not what their minutes said. Typically, they do say fifty-fifty, but for whatever reason, her minutes this time said that.
So could we amend this to read that correctly?
Well, either county.
Thank you.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor, approval. Will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Motion is approved unanimously.
B, motion to approve PDC laboratory invoice number one nine three three zero five three seven in the amount of one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirteen cents with a fifty-fifty split with the city, and it should say also county.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you, co-chairman Snow. Next, we'll have motions forward to the committee of the whole building, planning, and zoning and public works for March eleventh, twenty nineteen. The motions of building, planning, and zoning will be presented by chairman Snow.
Thank you, your honor. I tried to, I tried to ponderize Mr. Sanderson, but, A, motion to consent and approve the appointment of Mr. Kip Countryman as the director of building of the city of Belvidere as outlined in the mayor's memo, March fourth of twenty nineteen.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes, Alderman Porter.
All right, well, as I stated before, and again, this is not, I hope Mr. Countryman doesn't take this personally, but I still don't agree with the salary, you know, paying salary of the same thing that Lisa was making after seventeen years of service. My understanding is that she was hired in quite a bit less than her predecessor, even though she had like eight years' experience at the time, and I just, I'm going to have to vote no on this, just based on the ethics of it.
May I address your ethical question for a moment, please? You certainly are entitled to vote any way you want to, and I appreciate your comments on this, but you also understand that Mr. Countryman has worked in a similar position, and even a position of greater responsibility in the city of Rochelle for the last eleven years. Previous to that, he worked here, so his total experience is about the same. As we expressed before, and I want to make it very clear, he, he was, we negotiated with him, and he agreed to take a pay cut to come here to work for us. So I just wanted to make sure that that was very clear to everyone. Alderman Crawford, did you have something?
Do you answer your question?
Any other questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
No.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye, and thanks, Kip.
Crawford.
Aye.
Six in favor.
Motion is passed. Thank you. Next up, motions of public works will be presented by chairman Brooks. Chairman Brooks, you have the floor.
Thanks, mayor. I have motion to approve the purchase of fecal coliform testing equipment from the IDEX laboratories in the amount of six thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and zero one cent. Includes, this includes a four-year extended warranty. This equipment will be paid for from line item sixty-one dash five dash eight two zero dash six eight one two.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor, will when the name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Next, mayor, we have a motion to approve the proposal from Strand Associates at a cost not to exceed nine thousand, one hundred dollars for the southeast side water model update. This work will be paid for from line item sixty-one dash five dash eight one zero dash six zero four zero.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Alderman Porter.
Yeah, this question, I guess, is for Brent. This is, my understanding, this is private property right now. I'm wondering why the city is paying for this if the, I think that the owner of the property, if they want to develop property, should be paying for this, shouldn't they? Or we should have some way to recoup this at a later date?
That's correct. Your last statement, that would be, this would be built into a recapture agreement for, as development takes place out there, and the cost of those improvements will be spread over the benefit of the parties.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, approval. Will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Porter.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Next, mayor, we have a motion to approve the proposal from the Bonnell Industries in the amount of forty-four thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars to furnish and install a stellar shuttle eighty-four dash ten flex hookup lift system on the truck number seventy-nine of Ford F five fifty chassis, including duracast dump body and chipper box.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor, approval. Will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Next, mayor, we have a motion to enter into an agreement with Lakeland Biologist for the two thousand and nineteen Farmington Pond's maintenance program at an estimated cost of fifteen thousand, one hundred dollars, based on their proposal dated March fifth, two thousand and nineteen. This work will be paid for from the Farmington Pond's special service areas.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Yes, Alderman Freeman.
So Brent, this Farmington Pond's special service line item, that's not actually from the city, right? Those Farmington Fields people pay for this?
Correct. There's two special service areas for the different phases of the pond, of the subdivisions out there, but yes, they pay for it.
Any additional questions or comments concerning the motion on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Next, mayor, we have a motion to approve the low bid from Globe Construction in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars for the city's annual sidewalk program. The unit prices are ten forty, ten dollars and forty-five cents a square foot[1658.08] The unit prices are ten forty, ten dollars and forty-five cents a square foot for removal and replacement of four-inch sidewalk, and eight dollars and eighty cents a square foot for removal and replacement of six-inch sidewalk. This work will be paid for from the line item zero one dash five dash three one zero dash six zero zero three.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion on the floor? Alderman Freeman?
So is this strictly like for the downtown area, or is this for the residents who do a fifty-fifty split with the city?
This is our annual sidewalk program, so it would include the fifty-fifty program. It would also include the ADA sidewalk returns that we have to do on our overlay streets, as well as any other sidewalk that we would put in for water and sewer repairs.
So by rights, a resident would pay roughly five dollars and twenty-three cents for their share of a sidewalk per square foot?
Roughly, yes, correct.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor will, when your name is called signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
Next, Mayor, we have a motion to approve the low bid from Trees RS in the amount of fifty-four thousand six hundred dollars for tree work from May first, two thousand and nineteen, to April thirty, two thousand and twenty, for the city of Belvidere. This work will be paid for from forestry funds.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor?